Mrs. Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge?
...
So, the first order of business is the recognition and participation of visitors and delegates.
Do we have anybody, Mrs. Johnson?
No. All right, so we'll move forward from that. So, it looks like the superintendent's report.
Well, I think we have to...
I know how students can hear you.
Oh, the student report.
Well, we should read about the...oh, you already asked about the comments.
Yeah.
So, we're not going to read the whole spiel because nobody's here.
No. I'm sorry. Addie, I apologize.
Starting with updates from last meeting, to celebrate Black History Month, each week during morning announcements, we heard a short biography about a black person that has made a difference in the community and in the entire world. And that's been very exciting to get to class and be able to hear about all of this black excellence. So, that's exciting. Last Friday, February 21st, was Fitch's Unified Dance. So, students came from other schools that are near here, like Ledgerd and Stonington, and they had a great time getting dressed up and playing board games and just dancing with everyone, and it was a great time. And it was, yeah, it was a fantastic thing that happened. For class council updates, freshmen are meeting this Wednesday to discuss fundraiser ideas. Sophomores are continuing to plan for future fundraisers. For the juniors, the juniors are planning for their Mother's Day breakfast with the help of Ernie Cashmider, which will be on Saturday, May 9th. They're also getting ready for the junior prom, which is Saturday, May 16th. Seniors are planning for Mr. Falcon. So, contestants are currently making their videos and getting everything ready, and it's coming up, and it's very exciting. And Mr. Falcon will take place in the Fitch High School auditorium on Friday, March 13th, at 6:00 PM. Presale tickets are $5 for students and $8 for adults. Presales tickets can be purchased during school lunch waves, and tickets will also be available at the door for $8 for students and $10 for adults. For More Than Words, More Than Words members are going on a field trip this Thursday, February 27th, to Project O to speak to Cutler and Westside 7th graders about the consolidation of the two middle schools. So, at this field trip, students will be able to, or some of the grade students specifically, will be able to talk about concerns they have and different problems and solutions that they can come up with for different problems that arise and concerns, and just kind of have a conversation on how to make sure that the school is unified when we come to it, and just get students ready for that and excited for that. The Renaissance Club is helping to put on the Sandy Hook Promise Say Something Week. This is going to be next week. They're working on some new activities and new anonymous alert posters that feature QR codes for easier access to the anonymous alerts website. And also, the week before spring break in April is going to be the Care More Spirit Week. It's going to end in a pep rally focused on recognition, focuses on things like attendance, GPA improvement, clubs, and et cetera, to kind of just get the school ready for the second semester and everything's to come. For Fitch Athletics and Track and Field, senior Thomas Joyner finished 10th in the state open this weekend. He finished with a season PR, personal record. In fencing at the ACC tournament, Gabe R. finished first in men's epi, Ben T. finished second in the men's foil, and Julia Z. finished fourth in women's epi. The men's epi and men's foil were tournament champions. Co-captain Ayesha Brown joined the 1,000-point club last Friday in the victory against New London High School. And this is a special shout-out to Jinju Santa Lucia. She's currently a junior, and she's a student artist at her school. She's been working on a large mural that is located outside the cafeteria doors next to the library. It's a big, outstretched "Wings of a Falcon." So, if you're going through, you can see her working on it very diligently, and it's going to be a very cool thing to add to our list of our great artworks at our school. So, it'll be exciting. A lip sync battle is happening. This is put on by the Falcon Theater and the Gay Straight Alliance Club. They're teaming up to put on a teacher-versus-student lip sync battle on this Friday, February 28th. Doors open at 5:30, and it starts at 6:00. Tickets will be $5. The Trium Music Honor Society is putting on a student and faculty talent show on Friday, March 6th, at 7:00 PM, where teachers and students will be able to put on their own talent, and so that will be a very interesting and fun thing to see. And there will be a mattress fundraiser on Saturday, February 29th, from 10 to 5:00 in the small gym at Fitch. Mattresses and accessories will be available at the event for sale, and music students who refer customers will earn money for their individual student accounts, which can go to future music trips and all of that kind of thing.
Andrew, I have a quick question. Addie, could you just explain to me a little bit about your first bullet about Stonington students and Ledgerd students coming to Fitch and the board games?
Yeah.
I couldn't quite catch all of it.
So, that was the Fitch's Unified Dance for our special ed students, and also National Honor Society was involved, and the Unified Club was involved. So, it was just a bunch of students who were able to get together, students from other schools also, and it was just put on in the cafeteria, and there was lots of food, there was lots of dancing. Mr. Marcel was the DJ, which was really good, and everyone just had a really, really great time.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Addie. So, I see that we have...
We have an honored guest. Melissa, why don't you come on up to the podium? So, you want to do the introduction?
I'll introduce.
Yeah, please.
Melissa to the board. And I see Melissa's parents are here. Mr. and Mrs. James, James and Jessica Mancuso are here with her, and I'm sure as proud as they can be, because we all are. At Fitch High School, Melissa is, has earned an academic letter and an academic chevron. She has maintained the highest honors every marking period since she began her career at Fitch High School. She's a member of More Than Words, of the Student Council, and she runs indoor and outdoor track. All of her courses are either honors or AP or UConn early entrance, and she owns a black belt in martial arts, and that had nothing to do with her being chosen at all. But if you were at the ecumenical service, you heard Melissa's powerful voice. She's just wonderful. Melissa's schools of choice are Harvard, Yale, Johns Hopkins, where she intends to study neurosurgery. So, Melissa.
Hi.
I was going to say, perhaps you could tell us, when Dr. Ackerman said you have a strong voice, I suspect you meant a singing voice, because Melissa is, like her mother, so I understand her father's, is really a phenomenal singer.
Thank you.
I didn't know before the ecumenical service, but she also has a very strong voice, and Addie and I have the pleasure of working with her in the More Than Words program. She is a formidable young woman, and when you hear about her plans, you can rest assured there is a driving force behind that. So, maybe you could just talk a little bit. I know you've got some real concrete plans about your career, so perhaps you could talk a little bit about that.
Well, you know, everybody goes through little phases on what you want to do in life, you know, be a princess, firefighter, ballerina, you know, whatever. But there was a moment in time where I decided that I, well, I was always really interested in medicine and, like, human biology, but there was something that happened that just made me realize that I want to be a doctor. Like, it's my calling, it's what I'm meant to do in life. So, out of all the things you could do as a doctor or in the healthcare field, I really want to be a surgeon. Typical, well, most likely a neurosurgeon. I'm also debating cardiovascular. But, yeah, so that's definitely what I'm going to do, you know, go to college for four years, then go to med school, hopefully at NYU, because it's free. Yeah, and college-wise, you know, you heard those three reach schools, but you'd all probably be glad to know that I got a full ride to UConn with the Day of Pride Scholarship, and it covers literally everything, which is amazing. But, yeah, I've gotten accepted to a bunch of other schools so far, too, with early action, but, yeah.
Do you have any questions for Melissa?
I just want to say, congratulations. You've come a long way since ninth grade.
Thank you.
Awesome job. I'm very proud of you. So, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Mom and Dad. Very. You have a wonderful daughter.
You said it, you said it very quickly, but there's a special scholarship that University of Connecticut has called the Day of Pride. Tell us a little bit about that.
So, basically, they give it out to 20 students out of 37,000 applicants, I believe, and basically, your guidance counselor has to recommend you for it. And one day, my guidance counselor called me down, and I was thinking, what did I do wrong? And she was like, so, I am going to recommend you for this UConn scholarship that I heard about, and I was like, okay. You know, I've been thinking about UConn, I was going to apply there, but it was, the application, it wasn't that bad, but UConn is a regular decision school, so usually I would have to get it in by January, but I had to do all of this by November. I had to write an extra essay, get some extra letters of recommendation, turn it in early, and just a whole different application. And from then on, I think maybe a month later or so, I got a call about an interview at stores. So, I went. That was a whole nother story. I couldn't even find the place for, like, two hours, because they forgot to send me the email with directions. But, right before Christmas, I got a letter in the mail, and it said, you're a Husky, and your entire tuition and room and board and everything is covered.
Wow. Well done.
So, when she says she has a full ride, that includes books, tuition, room and board, that's how much University of Connecticut would...
Automatic admission to the honors college. Yeah, it's pretty solid.
Very impressive. Very impressive.
Wow, well done.
I did have a quick question. So, the Martin Luther King Scholarship that you received, which was $20,000 for four years, how is that used towards your education? I was curious. I probably could answer that better.
Yeah, I figured you would.
The, we have a lot of scholars who receive the scholarship but never request the funding, because it interferes with their packages. So, those monies then just go into the next year's scholars, so that they, they're applied to other scholarships. And sometimes, you know, we'll have a case where, oh, if we only had another scholarship, and that would do it. So, many times, that's what happens.
Oh, that, oh, good.
And then, and then if, if a student who didn't request the funding, supposing they had to take extra courses in the summertime, then they would request that, and it would be honored.
That's great.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Melissa.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Melissa. Appreciate it.
Now...
Now, I just wanted a couple of quick updates. The Groton Middle School schedule, I can't say enough about the work Susan and the tech staff and the guidance, the middle school. We, we are still, students have registered, have, I think the incoming 6th graders, 7th graders, 8th graders were pretty stunned by the number of elective offerings that they can select. And we are in the process, Susan and staff are in the process of putting the schedule together. So, I think certainly by the next meeting, we'll be able to report out on that. We have a couple of committees in terms of the Groton 2020 program. We have a naming committee. We're trying to figure out the names of these two middle schools, one at Cutler Site and one at the Westside Site. And we will be also, Susan and I and some of the principals are going to be holding meetings to explain to the parents what the potential themes are. So, we have, we will have five magnet elementary schools, two of them already have themes, the STEAM at Kolnawski and the Performing Arts at Northeast Academy. So, we need a theme for the Westside Elementary School, the Cutler School that will be at the, I mean, the elementary school at the Cutler Site, and one for Charles Barnum. So, we're, we're working on that. So, it's, it's all actually coming together in the middle of all the budget season. And I'll let Sam talk about the physical aspects of it, and Rick is here to keep an eye on us, so we, we don't say bad things about the, Rick Norris is the one who's actually building the school, so sort of literally, so it's a delight to have him here. Yeah. So, that's it for me.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the assistant superintendent's report.
I'm going to follow up with the timeline that might help orient you to all the activity that's happening. I've shown you this timeline before, so I got rid of last year's information and started you out. The middle school scheduling went really well with this marvelous consultant that we had. It's not complete yet, but we're working on it, and we're really excited about the opportunities. 800 middle schoolers wanted to take the fitness class. I mentioned to our high school music teachers that we had probably at least 100 or more students for each of the bands, the levels of the band, beginning, middle, and advanced. Orchestra, same thing. Chorus was a big hit. I think it was, like, 600 kids want to have chorus, and because we have those half-blocks and full-blocks, they really will be able to do all these things. So, it's really, and also get SRBI or resource along with that. So, we're really quite excited, but we're still working very hard on it. And in the past, students really didn't have their schedule till the first day of school, but my hope and promise would be that they will have it before they go off to the summer, so they'll have their middle school schedule. I think that will alleviate a lot of concern. So, that's exciting. You also, Mike had mentioned a couple of the different meetings. We have a stakeholders' meeting on the 13th of March, where we'll be able to talk to some of those people who really are going to be very involved in moving things out of the old schools and into the new. Some of the, you know, real, you know, the secretaries, the custodial staff, those people who are going to be in charge of that. Mike is going to have another joint middle school staff meeting on the 17th of March. They'll have several opportunities to have site visits, thanks to Tammy Hamlin, and she will be able to give tours for our staff, who are very anxious to see what does their classroom look like, what does the lab look like. We also will be meeting with middle school parents and students on the 25th of March and giving them a virtual tour of the building and giving them some answers to some of those frequently asked questions that they're putting up on our website. So, you know, we're finalizing staffing, you know, hopefully through April, and we want to give people information sooner than later. So, that's coming along, and, you know, opening day, September 1st, and probably a little before, so they can, you know, get into their classrooms. So, Rick has more on that. My second topic is about the Groton Early Childhood Collaborative Grant that we worked on with Children First Groton and the School Readiness Council. As you know, we've been in a community collaboration over, with early childhood. Groton Public Schools serves as a fiduciary, and we're able to receive about $500,000 each year for many, many seats at Riverfront TVCCA and some of those community preschools, which is really important to us as we get kids ready for, you know, public schooling. And this collaborative has been working together for a very long time, I think since 1998, and they had received some grant funding originally. Their, their mission is all Groton children are safe, healthy, successful learners connected to strong families and community that value diversity. So, I just wanted to say that when the call went out, that there was this $30,000 grant, people from around the town, the, you know, the town council has a member that's going to be serving. We had Parks and Rec there, we had the libraries there, we had Groton Public Schools, we had Children First Groton, so, you know, it filled up Room 11. So, that tells you about this community when the call goes out. And this grant is really more of an administrative grant, and it's really getting us ready for a bigger grant, a federal grant that gives out millions of dollars to communities on preschool development. It's called the PDGB5 Grant. So, in taking this one on, we're setting the stage for a future grant that the community can look. And I know this Board of Ed is just so interested...
Yes.
...in preschool, and, you know, this could be something very exciting. The other good news is it's a community grant, so it'll go through the charter aspects if we receive this grant, but it's a community aspect. So, it's the town, it's the city, it's the, you know, the, all the different departments, and we will serve as a fiduciary again. So, I just wanted to give you that information. It was really fun to work with this group. And last but not least, it's getting that time of year. I hope you'll all have books ready to go and visit our schools. This is the Year of the Lorax and an Earth-friendly. So, this is our one book for the one district, and the one problem will be making a promise to reduce, reuse, and recycle. So, we're really excited about that, and kids will be making a promise, and we'll count all of our promises, and we'll really talk, it coincides with Earth Day in a way, you know, in the next month, so we're really looking forward to learning the lessons of the Lorax and how we can keep a greener community.
Great.
And you two can push, we're going to have a little, on the website, we'll have a Make the Promise, so we'll collect all the promises from around the community, and the kids will make their promises in school, and we'll count up all those different promises from around the district.
Great.
Wonderful.
I think you're up, Ken.
Hello. So, we're looking at the updated object code summary. We're still on track, as we have been for the past few months. We are over budget in salaries and in property services for reasons that we've discussed before, we can again if you wanted to go over. But we are under budget in benefits, tuitions, and supplies. So, overall, we are looking at a projected unexpended balance of $84,593 at this point.
Pretty stable.
Yeah, very stable.
I'm going to talk about the health.
I can, certainly. The health insurance report through December, 83.7% of budget. So, you'll recall last month, we talked about the report. There was an error that had been detected. That error has been corrected. This report is, is, is complete through December. So, we're at 83.7%. This compares to last December, where we were at 86.5%, so we're a little bit ahead of where we were last year. And last year, we ended up, I think, around 93, 94%. So, I would anticipate we'd end up somewhere in that, that region again this coming year.
William, sorry, Grant.
So, I don't really have an alliance funding report to share. Susan and her staff and I are still working with the, with the state, the turnaround office on our budget. We've made a number of different tweaks, made another tweak this morning. We'll hopefully have that approved. The, the funding is there, we just have to finish the, the budgeting process so that we can get access to those funds. But we are ready. We have started the hiring process for the, for the EL teacher, the social worker that are on that, on that funding, and so once we get that funding, we'll be able to go.
Good. Thank you. Buildings and grounds.
Good evening. So, I'll give you a report on Groton 2020. Regarding the Groton Middle School, on President's Day, Tom Beebe, who is going to be arranging the moves of the two middle schools to the new middle school, met with Rick Norris, Tammy Hamlin, and myself, and we started at Cutler Middle School, went to Westside Middle School, and ended up at the Groton Middle School to see the totality of what is going to be moved and where it will be moved to. So, it was a nice visit on President's Day. The maintenance staff, our entire maintenance staff made a visit on Friday to the site, and all were impressed, needless to say, and it actually worked out pretty well. There were, the gentleman who's the head of all the mechanicals in the building, heating, air conditioning, all that stuff, was part of the tour, and he was able to speak with our personnel that are involved in it, Bill Johnson, Jamie Anderson, and so, so on. So, it really turned out to be a really positive and helpful event. This week, the Food Service Department, Ernie Marge Fondulis, who is going to be the head at, at that kitchen at the new Groton Middle School, and I will visit, and we're going to be checking out the space and seeing how that's going to lay out and have a plan for as the equipment starts to arrive later on. And there's an FFNE meeting at the OSCGR on Wednesday, which I will attend, along with the, our representatives, so the architect and so on. Regarding the elementary schools, April 1st, we hope to, that's the plan, to start site work at Cutler Middle School, and I believe on the 13th, about the 13th, we plan to start the site work at Westside Middle School. So, that is coming faster than we anticipated, I think.
Can you repeat that date again? Did you say April 1st?
April 1st, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Cutler Middle School, and then about the 13th will be Westside Middle School.
So, mid-April, we're going to have to make some moves at, at Westside vis-à-vis the portable, it would appear.
Rick's going to answer that question.
No, no, you won't.
Oh, good.
What we're looking at and what we discussed previously with, with your staff is that the middle schools would remain active, so the sites will be partially fenced off. You can see that on the town's website. It's also been on a couple of Facebook pages that show areas where fields and areas of the sites would not be in use after particular dates. So, what would happen, for example, at Cutler, we would put a fence up that would bifurcate the site. We would leave the portables inside the school side, so they could be used through the end of the school year, and similarly, on, on the West Side with the, with the one, one school. So, those would remain in play until, you know, we give you that drop dead date when everybody has to be out of every place.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I know that before the end of the week, Dr. Grenier is going to make a prediction that March is coming very soon, so April is not too far behind it. And then the last item that I had regarding the elementary schools is that there will be an FFNE meeting with the staff, Rick, the owner's rep, the architects, also on Wednesday, while the other group will be in Hartford. FFNE, for those who remember or don't remember, is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So, that's, it's a little bit earlier for the elementary schools. The architect's bringing this up earlier than the, than the last group did, but, so, early certainly won't hurt a thing, I don't think. I think it's going to be good, so that's it.
Sam, I have a question. What is going to happen to all the furniture fixtures that are presently at Cutler and Westside and then the... and then the two elementary, three elementary schools?
Well, it's still being determined, but there, as we made the walk through those two middle schools the other day, we saw a lot of furniture that has just been purchased recently and is in excellent shape. We'll be able to use some of that furniture at the new middle school and be able to apply the money that we would have spent on that to something else. So that's one thing. And then the rest will have to, it'll have to be determined by the purchasing agent for the town. Usually it goes out to auction. Maybe the town might consider offering it to other districts that might want it, if it, if it's not of use to us. There may be some things, we talked about a few things, that we can use in the elementary schools, so.
Or the high school.
Or in, in the high school, any other schools in the district, so.
Bring it to the high school.
But, but there will be leftover things that are obsolete or no longer used to us anyways, and we'll have to work that out with the town.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sam? And then we'll move on to the committee reports, so policy.
Policy continues to meet. Today, we're going to have two policies that we will talk about today. One on, what is that, the?
Conflict of interest, which is new.
Yes, and the other.
And just a couple of little changes on the first aid emergency.
Yes, we'll do that under old business.
Very good.
New business.
Curriculum has not met, but we are planning a meeting. We have, we have a question out for some information from the state, and that's, and then we just wanna talk about things in general. Yes, okay, finance and facilities.
Finance and facilities did not meet in February, we will meet again on March second.
Negotiations are beginning on March tenth. We have one set of negotiations to enter into.
With the custodians.
Right. And Learn?
Learn, we had our Learn Board of Directors meeting at the Ocean Avenue Learning Center, and we had a tour, and had the proposal, which is going to be, the second floor is gonna be redone. There is such a demand for students to come to the Ocean Avenue. I think there are sixty or eighty students on a waiting list. So it already needs to have the second floor addressed. Let's see, Dr. Erickson included her, her goals and did her mid-year presentation to the executive committee. And that was about it. Most of it was the tour of the Ocean Avenue Learning and how wonderful it is and how happy the students are there. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Board of Ed and Town Council, RTM, Lee, are you gonna report on that?
It has not met in four months.
Oh, well then.
Although I do think.
Maybe March.
March fourth, isn't it?
March fourth, well, yes.
Okay. The Board of Ed, AJ?
We met last month, and so we'll meet again in March.
Very good, thank you. And Groton Scholarship, Lee?
They have not met yet, but I tried to find out who's on it and where we meet. I was sent something that has to do, it's a certain, something that I couldn't load. So I went down and talked to Adam, and Adam said he doesn't know why it was sent at all, that it's not a dangerous thing to be sending. So all I know for sure is that I see it is meeting in March at Fitch. I don't know where, I'll find out, I have no idea yet, but I will be there.
Very good.
The Vice Principal, Matt Brown, I think it might be.
Does he, was?
He's the person, I think.
I think it was Erin who sent me this, but, yeah, I'll find out, I'll be there.
I'm sure it was Matt, maybe they switched.
I'll be there.
Gretchen Trails?
Trails?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
I did not get all that lost on the way here.
All right, so we're gonna move to the, we're gonna move to the consent agenda.
I have a question under consent. They talked about who was at the meeting, where we all were together. I'm not sure that Rita Schmidt was on Town Council. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't get this off. But in any case, it said that she was here at that meeting, but I think she didn't run this year. So I don't think she's on Town Council anymore.
So we're trying to determine the minutes of the check?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, that's, I just looked through the names, and I know that she didn't run.
Oh, I see.
Rita Schmidt.
Under the Town Council, she was present. Yeah, so we'll, we'll fix that. We'll figure it out, John. So let's consider that an amended consent, but we, but we still need a motion.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Second. Yep, any discussion?
Other than the?
Other than that? I guess approved as, we will, when we approve it, we'll approve it as amended, when we do that. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. I have it written down right here. You, you have, you had to be there, you had to be in on that joke, anyway. In all the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Accepted as amended?
If you'd like, I'll go through the gifts.
I would like that.
Okay, so the, the board wants to acknowledge, in the approval of the gifts, Cindy Howell Farm has made a donation of a hundred fifty pounds of beef valued at six hundred twenty-eight dollars to the Fitch High School Foods and Culinary Program. That's a kind of a farm-to, farm-to-school initiative. Servell has made a donation of a hundred dollars to the Rochester Breakfast Bag Program. There are two donations from Your Clause LLC, trustee for Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign. Michelle Ezel Atkins has made two donations, actually of a hundred forty dollars each, to the Rochester School. And Crayola has donated seventy-two bucks, valued at approximately a hundred dollars for use in the theater classes at Cutler Middle School. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, there's, apparently there's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And new business, the first item is a discussion and possible action regarding the approval of a field trip request to Spain and Portugal, so scheduled for June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, through July sixth, twenty twenty-one.
And I think Yvette is here, so this is a projected trip for, is it next summer?
Yeah, it's in the summer, yeah.
And so we're just getting that, get ahead of the, the curve, so, so that this is.
But not this summer, the following, twenty twenty-one, yeah.
This is Yvette Morales, who is a Spanish teacher. And, and so she's, before she really gets into the fundraising for this trip, I wanna be sure the board feels, feels comfortable with it.
Hi, so I'm Yvette Morales, I am a Spanish teacher at Fitch. And I already took a trip with my kids a few years ago to Peru. It was very successful, the kids really enjoyed it, they were immersed in the language, talking Spanish. I wanted them to talk the most Spanish that they could when they were there. And I thought, you know, I love the company that, that EF Tours that we used. And, you know, they approached me again for, to see if I wanted to do another one, and that was, since it was two years ago, I said, I think we're ready. And, and this one is really nice, 'cause it has two countries, Portugal and Spain, half of the time in one and half the other. I usually like doing it in the summer, so that the kids, it doesn't conflict in April vacation and, you know, or anything like that, or with sports. And a lot of children, a lot of students are very interested, and parents too, and.
My name is Erin Pusketa, hello, good evening.
Come to the mic, please.
Welcome on this wonderful spring-like evening. Yes, so I'm a French teacher at Fitch High School, and I am very interested in going with Yvette, if not as a chaperone, as a paying customer. So I am just here to lend my support, and I think the kids are really excited about potential travel. It really aligns with our NYPD, with our IB, it's real-world, relevant experiences, hands-on use of the language, it will give me an excuse to really get going with my Spanish. Portuguese, not so much. But I am a hundred percent behind her as a colleague, and if not a chaperone, a traveling paying customer. Thank you.
Could you tell us how many students would be going on the trip?
Well, they, so far, about ten kids are interested. So it's, you know, I would say twelve to have another chaperone with me, 'cause it's every six kids is one chaperone, so we're just waiting for that. And, yeah, I mean, I mean, it could be more, because if I, if I put it out there and it's one more year.
Yes.
Actually, more than a year, 'cause it's, it's not until June, the end of June of twenty twenty-one. So we'll have the opportunity to get more kids in and probably another chaperone.
I really appreciate you planning so far in advance. It's wonderful for the families, for the board, you know, everyone, thank you.
It makes it, it makes it affordable, because it's not for another year, you know, a year and a half, and makes it affordable for the parents, and, and the kids, you know, the ones that are interested, I, I, I just give it to everybody, you know, I show, I ask everybody, but I, usually it's my kids, because I don't have all the kids. But the ones that I have in the class, and then they spread the word. If one goes, the other one wants to go, or their friends, so it's, it's really exciting. And I, and I've been talking to the kids, and they're, they're all really excited about, you know, knowing if they can go or if can get approved to go.
As it gets closer, could you share with the board the brochure also?
Yeah, I think I shared the PowerPoint that I, that I was gonna, that they sent me from EF to Joyce, I believe.
I can, I can put that in board notes.
Yeah, we didn't, we, I didn't.
Or I can, I can forward it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, if you don't mind if I approach, I can.
Oh.
That has itinerary and everything.
Yeah, you can actually give it to Joyce, and then she'll put it in our board packet. That would be wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds wonderful.
This is Porter.
Yvette, is this, this trip, is it also open for families to go? Okay, so it's not just the students?
No.
It's the students and their families and the younger children that are going? That's great.
Well, I have, I have, I have a student that I don't have this year, but I had last year, and she's interested. Her cousin's interested, her sister, so it's, it's, many people are interested. So not only, and, and I'm putting it out there for families too, not just the students, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept, to approve the field trip request to Spain and Portugal scheduled for June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, through July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Of course, those dates are still, are those hard dates, or are those?
It could be four days before the twenty-fifth.
Or four days after?
Correct.
Okay, so within four days of each of those dates?
I'll second that. Okay, good, any discussion? Approved?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so now.
Now we have another trip, and my two music colleagues are here, Andrew LaFave and John Frascarelli, talk a little bit about a trip to, to Toronto, actually next, in spring, not this April, but next April. Twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Again, it would have been nice if in the motion, we should include that it's about a music trip, and there's like no information, it's just a trip, a real trip. It needs to have a little more detail than that in the motion, I mean, we should have ended.
To approving.
The music students.
Am I on? Am I live, this is live?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, okay.
You're on.
We're back again. So our trip that we've put together is to Toronto, it's April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one to May second. The students would take part in Toronto's Heritage Music Festival, so it'd include other high school programs. There's clinics, there's performances, they would see other performances from schools in the United States and Canada with this. You can see that as I put, as we put the whole thing together, it's open to concert band, jazz ensemble, percussion ensemble, orchestra, treble choir, concert chorus, chamber choir. So basically, any of the students that are enrolled in one of the classes for next year would be eligible, eligible to participate. The trip, let's see, we don't have an exact itinerary with activities. Once we move forward, we'll be working with a travel agent specifically in Toronto to help organize those things, but I listed some things that we've already talked about. Something was doing, doing an extended masterclass where they would work besides the festival. They would also get to work with possibly like a college professor on the music, whether it's at McGill or York University. Other things include Niagara Falls, there's lots of things in Toronto's entertainment district, including the Toronto Symphony, there's the famous CN Tower, and there's, I named the Museum of Contemporary Art, but there's lots of museum options. So we have yet to kind of put together a finalized itinerary. It shows the range of the cost, which ranges between seven twenty-five to eight hundred, and that really depends on how many students and what extra activities we choose to do. All breakfasts and dinners are included in that price, along with a complete insurance policy for each student that is attending. Let's see, what else? I've got some of the fundraising information on the bottom. I'm happy to field questions. Everyone's looking through it, I know.
I think it's a great compliment to the, to the England trip that you, that you went on. You know, you're, it's sort of, you know, it's all sort of part of what went on when you went to England and to London, and.
Yeah, we, we thought of, we've done Virginia Beach, which is very similar, three nights, and we were trying to think, where, where do we take the kids that's somewhere different and somewhere that they may not usually go, and yet they still have a great musical experience and visit, you know, a city that maybe not everyone has been to, so we set out to. And it's actually shorter to Toronto than it is to a lot of those places down in Virginia.
And they'll get their passports and.
Right.
It's wonderful.
It's the British Empire.
Yeah, the British Empire.
Yes, it is. So do I have a motion?
Yeah, we have to amend it, though, to, maybe to approve a field trip.
Music program, I was gonna say, to approve the music program trip.
To, yes. Fitch High School, we should say Fitch High School, too, not, 'cause it could be any other school.
To, to approve the Fitch High School music program trip to Toronto, Canada, how's that?
Perfect.
I hope you've had poutine before.
I have, I'm happy to say.
We should finish the, so for April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, through May second, twenty twenty-one. So.
So I think we already made the motion.
Oh, you moved it.
I made the motion, okay.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh.
Oh, sorry, we should have said discussion.
So fresh, kids who are freshmen in London will be seniors in Canada.
Eee, wait a minute, last year, so this, hold on. Right, is that correct?
That would be correct, Liam Ziegler was a freshman.
Did you go this year?
Will be a senior next year.
Think Virginia Beach.
No, 'cause we went last year to London.
Oh, last year, London.
They'll be juniors, the children who were freshmen last year will be juniors this, for this trip.
Okay, so sophomore, that's still cool, so you'll have some of them.
That's actually, I was, I was going to mention this, Ted said, to mention it to you and see what your thoughts were. John and I have been trying to, the parents have requested a little bit more of an organized, kind of a trip rollout, because sometimes we plan these things, and some kids are there for four years, and they get one trip. Some groups have missed out on a large trip, so parents said, how could you even that out? So we did present to the boosters, and I've explained it to Ted, that we tried to put together a four-year cycle. So this year is just a day trip, we're going to see Dear Evan Hansen in New York City for the day. Next year would be this trip, three overnights, a smaller trip. The next year would be another off year, maybe a day trip, something like that. And then the other year would be a larger trip, whether it's to Europe or something of that nature. And therefore, when a kid is in the music program at least once, they would go on a big trip in four years, and then a smaller trip, and then you'd have off years. So we haven't really thought about too much, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, which would be that, that next time, but I thought I'd kind of put it into your mind that we might be thinking about Europe, a location unknown. I just wanted to mention it because in case, you know, the music boosters said, you know, are we able to host fundraisers and things like that, even if the trip is so far out? So I just wanted to kind of, if that's something, that rotation is, is okay, even though that hasn't been approved a hundred percent.
Makes good sense.
Thank you.
I just ask that you do organize the parent chaperones a little, like, so that parents can be with their children instead of having. I just ask that you do organize the parent chaperones a little, like, so that parents can be with their children instead of having parents end up, their kids going one way and they go another way. Just a little more organization than in London.
It, it was stressful because I think we.
Yes, I know.
We discovered that a lot of families kind of thought of it as a personal vacation and that we left John and I, you know, trying to help to understand that it was a school sanctioned trip. So I think we'd have to revisit the chaperones because we had a lot of parents wanting to just take their kids out. And it was difficult for us to track because of the amount of parents that wanted to have a personal vacation rather than follow our itinerary. So it was, it was rather difficult. This trip will only be chaperones. It won't be open to families for Toronto.
I, I have a suggestion. For your twenty twenty-three trip, the Salisbury Music, Music Festival. The Salisbury Music Festival would be a wonderful trip for your twenty twenty-three.
I'm checking that.
Yeah, you could explore that.
Want to be a chaperone?
Any other discussion?
I haven't.
So are we ready?
We're all set.
Did we, I don't think we did.
No.
No, no, we didn't vote.
We have a motion on the floor.
Well, she, she's called for it and then we had the discussion, so I think we have to call, uh.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved, it's, um.
Thank you.
Approved as amended, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Good night.
And I, I know that we have, um, we have several, we have at least, well, we have two, um, policies to, to, um, consider. But I'd like to move Mr. Norris up.
That is, um, number five?
It's number six.
Six?
Number five.
No, it's five. I'm sorry, it's five.
This is a follow-up to. To Wednesday night's presentation. Right. Uh, that Rick, uh, came in. And, and Christine Hopkins.
Christine Hopkins and Amy. Yeah, I'm happy to be here tonight. The, the reason I'm here tonight is to receive approval of the drawings, which I have on the table, the specifications and the budget. And I'll give you the budget figures on, on the middle, on the middle school, uh, furniture fixtures and equipment. So, um, basically the presentation, there's been really no changes to that presentation. We may have a couple of additions based on usable other materials that are at the, at the other middle schools. So we'll look at that as we go by. But right now, um, the budget for the, for the FFNE is two point one two five million. And the FFNE right now is going to be handled separately from, uh, the technology, which has the same budget. But we'll have to deal with, uh, the next time I come visit you folks. But our budget right now, or our estimated cost, is, uh, one, uh, million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So we're under budget at this point, which gives us some flexibility on what we are. But we won't know what all the costs are because the majority of items will be bought on state contract. So we'll see what, what we get on the state contract. There'll be two or three items that need to go out to bid, like there's some pianos, electronic pianos, a couple of other things that will require to go out, will, will be required to go out to bid because they're not available on the state, through the state contracting portal. So we'll be moving forward as soon as we get approval and start with our purchase orders. Hoping to get all the equipment, uh, starting to order in, in, uh, April, getting it delivered in, in May and June and getting it in place. So July, or the end of July, early August timeframe, a lot of the furniture will be in. And, uh, early August, potentially, teachers could come in. I'll work with the building official to get a, whether it's a temporary, uh, order or, or a permanent CO, we'll, we'll be working on that. So what I, what I need is for you folks to approve those documents I described. I need the superintendent to sign them. I need also the chair, or if the chair's not going to be available, maybe the co-chair would like to sign them.
The vice chair will sign.
Yes, I will.
Okay, and, uh, we can go forward with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions beforehand, so please feel free.
So let's have the mo, motion first. Yeah, so Rita, you want to move it?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the Groton Middle School Furniture, Fixtures and Equipment Plan.
I'll send it.
Okay, all right.
Discussion.
Discussion. Discussion. If any leftover money, does that go towards like possibly solar panels? I mean, can it, or does it have to be used towards furniture?
The, any leftover money will, will fall back into the town's contingency funds, which we have some now. Solar panels, what we're looking at is not costing the town because we're working with the Green Bank. And it's no cost to the town, it'll be a cost to the Board of Education for electricity. So cost of, the, cost of the solar panels, at least for Cutler and, and, uh, the middle school, Groton Middle School, will be virtually at no cost to the town, other than, than the utility bills that will be, uh, applied afterwards. So it'll be a power purchase agreement.
Okay.
But if we save money, it could considerably be redirected to some other purchase, like for a nylon or whatever it's called.
Well, what we, what we'd look at is then we'd have to take some things back to the Permanent School Building Committee because they're oversight for our spending. I mean, we could spend it, but it's not what we're supposed to do. So if there's additional materials that were required, we'd probably need to take it back to the Permanent School Building Committee, just like we did the turf field, which we've got approval for funding, so we're moving forward with that. And we've got a nice infill for that field. So the monies that's gonna, are going to be left at the end, we'll see how we can apply those to other things that may help the educational process.
But they'll be reallocating.
Are the, the fields going to be on the right when you're coming down, um, Groton Long Point Road? Is it, you know, where they have a lot of like equipment right now?
Yes, the fields will be there.
Those are the fields.
Uh-huh, they'll be accessible through the, uh, high school. So through the high, through the high school parking lot or coming up the hill from the bottom, there will be a, not a driveway, where the current driveway is for construction. There'll be a walkway, a six-foot wide break in the wall, if you will, for pedestrian traffic to come into the fields. And there'll be another pedestrian walk off of Fort Hill Road where they can come in and also access the fields in that direction.
But you'll be able to see them on the road.
Yeah, potentially, yes.
Potentially.
Yeah.
How many fields are there?
There's one softball field, which will be way up in the corner of Groton Long Point Road and, uh, and, uh, Fort Hill Road. There'll be a, a smaller multipurpose grass field, both the ball field, baseball field, softball field. And this multipurpose will be sod, it will be sodded with, with grass, real turf. The multi-turf, uh, the multi-use turf field will be closer to the high school entrance. So if you come in through the high school entrance towards the schools, it'll be on the right side as you come through. So that area where you see all the trailers, and actually, if you, if you walk over to Fitch, or you happen to look in there and see a bunch of six-foot fence posts sticking up, that's where the turf field is going to be. It's about a hundred and six thousand square feet, all in all. So it's a full-size soccer field plus ten feet run out all the way around the field. And it's all going to be this artificial turf that we've got approved. And it's, it's a very nice-looking turf. Used, used, it's FIFA, one of the FIFA fields that they use for professional soccer is used this, this infill and this material. It's not rubber, it's a, uh, organic infill, so we won't have the problem that people keep telling me about that we have rubber pellets everywhere. And we don't have to worry about them getting on the grass, getting washed down into the, into the brook down below, so. So we're looking forward to getting that installed, which will probably be toward midsummer.
Yeah. Very exciting. Any other discussion? Okay. Approved?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Say what?
All in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Restrained? Abstained? Okay.
Go with restraint.
Yeah. Okay.
It's proved.
So, so if I could impose upon you to come around and sign the documents, then we can.
Oh, we have to walk down, yeah.
So he could leave.
Susan, while we take a minute, could you explain a little bit, uh, to the home audience about the Super Bowl event on Thursday night?
On Thursday? Yes, it's really to honor, um, our police departments in the city and in the town, our community. And, um, it's a farm-to-table event, thanks to Ernie Koschmier. And come and have a bowl of soup. There's actually, if you go onto the grotonschools.org website, it automatically comes up that you can register. And I think it's a, a very economical price of five dollars for the meal.
What's the date?
And it is Thursday night, which is, um.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So, um, come one, come all.
And five, six, or?
I think it starts at five-thirty.
Five-thirty?
Yep, five-thirty to seven. So it's a wonderful event for any of you who've been before, you know, and delicious soups from all different, um, restaurants and vendors and, um, and even our own food services, farm-to-table, so. I've got tickets.
And don't forget to bring the reusable bowl that you can bring home.
Yes. That's right.
I've got four of them. No less.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next name is, uh, a discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of policy P four-one-one-eight, point one-three, conflict of interest.
I just put a board, just seeing again the technology.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brett, thank you a lot. So, okay, does somebody want to move that?
Well, you have to, somebody has to read it first, the motion.
That's what I meant. That's actually what I.
Well, she read the discussion. She read this.
Right. Rachel will do it. Thank you.
Motion to approve the first reading of policy P four-one-one-eight dot one-three, conflict of interest.
Somebody want to second that?
Tell them, please. I'll second. Thank you.
Discussion?
No.
Okay.
It's pretty cut and dry here.
It is. And you know, we usually like to present you with, um, the regulations, although the board votes on the policy, but the regs usually come along. But we wanted to spend a little more time really clarifying that. So we'll bring you back the regulations or send them out to you, but we wanted to get the policy in place.
Very good, okay.
Yep.
Yep. In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's passed. It, it's approved. Okay, and the next one is discussion and possible action regarding the approval of Groton. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just tell somebody to read it.
The use of automatic external defibrillators.
Yeah.
So. You'll move it? Okay.
Motion to approve as a first reading policy P five-one-four-one dot two-seven, use of automatic external defibrillators.
Discussion? Second.
Second.
I'm sorry. Second.
So actually, this policy was written twelve years ago when we all had the defibrillators put into our schools. And we just, we're, we've been reviewing several of the different policies and noticed that this one, um, needed to make sure that we, um, we removed Fitch High School, Catherine Kolnowski and Northeast Academy because now it's on all of our school grounds. And we also, um, changed the wording, such AEDs are not intended and, to, and, do not replace the assistance. And we just took out the, the language are not intended to and just said are not, do not replace the assistance of qualified medical professionals. So that disclaimer is in there fully.
Any other discussion? Hmm, okay. In favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Mrs. Johnson. Great. So I think we came to, we're now on the big one. So, Mr. Whiteloff, would you?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget in the amount of seventy-seven million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, which is a point six-four percent increase over the current budget.
So move? Should, I think she's second. Okay. I'm not sure who, didn't Jay, didn't you move that?
She, she moved it, so you seconded it.
Yeah.
Do, do we need an amended number? Oh, we don't? Okay. Great.
Mr. Whiteloff, you want to talk about that?
Well, I just, for those who, um, might be watching at home, I just, um, would like to say, this is almost a year-round process. Definitely for Ken Knight and Dr. Grenier, this, this budget process. And it looks like we're, um, we're, we're taking this motion tonight, but it, it represents, uh, many meetings, starting in finance in the fall. And then the board meets, uh, several times a month during January, uh, and February, uh, to go through every line of this budget, and determine, you know, where our priorities are. So even though we're taking this vote tonight, it's the culmination of a lot of work on the, uh, part of administration and the board. In fact, we really don't have time to discuss a lot of other things. Almost everything's a finance meeting during January and February. And I wonder if Dr. Grenier could just share with us, um, some of the highlights of what, how this is going to support, uh, the district.
Well, when we finished the, the meeting on Wednesday night, uh, I was, I was asked to kind of take an overview of what, what's in this budget, which, which has a projected increase of, um, under five hundred thousand dollars. So it's about a point-six percent in, increase, which, over the last nine years, would, would, would keep us, again, under, um, about a point-seven percent increase that, that we've averaged, uh, over the, over the nine years. But when, when I looked at this budget and Ken and I went through it and Susan and we, we looked at some things that really jumped out at us. Number one, maintenance of class sizes, that's a kind of a foundational, uh, aspect here. We also looked at the academic, athletic and extracurricular and we're really pleased that the board essentially maintained all of the sports participation, all of the extracurricular participation at, at both middle schools. So we're bringing double programs there in, in effect. We have a proposal here that will bring instructional coordination and supervision to the campus. We've, we've added, uh, a few part-time administrators. Although since they are, they will remain part-time teachers, it actually comes at a, a, a very reasonable, a very, very tiny increase to the budget. The budget supports our International Baccalaureate Program, six through twelve. We, uh, we are in the process of implementing MYP, Middle Years Program, uh, in grade six through ten. We already have a, a, a robust diploma program in grades eleven and twelve. And we will be applying next year to begin a career-related program of international baccalaureate. All of these things require initial funding upfront in the budget that does that. We, we, we will be upgrading our technology infrastructure. We have lots of technology devices and the, the, kind of the back office that keeps it all. We have lots of technology devices and the kind of back office that keeps it all running, hubs and switches and servers and so forth. That will be upgraded, as well as continuing the one-to-one initiative at the high school with one computer for each high school student. And I'm happy to add that the Groton Middle School will now have a school resource officer, full-time school resource officer, plus some additional security personnel. But when I, when we finished the meeting the other night, we kind of stepped back and said, "We've come a long way with Groton 2020." It was originally formulated in early 2014, and so what we have now, six years later, is a modern, state-of-the-art facility that's going up on the top of Fort Hill. We will realize about $1.5 million in annual operating costs, because we will, Groton 2020 will have us, well, we're going to close two schools and operate one, but we're going to close what will turn out to be four elementary schools to be replaced by two, so again, annual operating. Just in the last few years, we will have gone from 10 schools to seven. When I looked at it over the last 20 years, from 2001 to 2021, we will have gone from 14 schools to seven schools. So if, you know, if you just do some quick math, you see we've had some significant cost avoidance with administrators, teachers. We've lost, we've lost about 100, excuse me, we've lost, the enrollment has been decreased by about 1,100 students, but the teaching staff has been reduced by 100 teachers. So that is a huge, huge sum of cost avoidance. When we started, if you remember, in 2014, the idea was maybe we would fix the schools and not build new. And we estimated that it would cost about $65 million to do the, just the CIPs that were, had been listed. That's to say that heating, ventilation, the boilers, the roofs. So I think we all agreed that after spending $65 million, you'd end up with 50, 60-year-old schools, in some cases, 70-year-old schools. And so that's a huge benefit for the community. And then the whole issue of trying to achieve racial balance without constantly redrawing neighborhood lines, that is a key feature of what's going on here. So when we look at the cost of wait, for this year alone, it's $885,000. So the teacher account that typically goes up by about 2%, which is in the $700,000 neighborhood, is actually down by 1.5%. It's a significant decrease because of the consolidation, but we've kept class sizes the same. We've actually, we don't have the exact number yet, but we know that we have greatly minimized any kind of layoffs that will be needed because of the teacher early retirement incentive. And lastly, what I did is like, we went back to 2017, when the magnet schools of southeastern Connecticut had been approved for New London. And so that was, in 2017, I compared the magnet school tuition to what we're projecting for next year, and it's $610,000 less. We knew we were spending a lot of money on magnet schools, and certainly we want to support the learned schools, and there's some fine choices, but we want it to be competitive. And as Susan knows, the middle school has really forged us ahead. Learned unfortunately had to move its middle school. I think we're getting 12 of those students back. There are students who are leaving, Benny Dover. The new, our new middle school is obviously very attractive, and for lots of reasons. Not just that it's a new facility, but it's an International Baccalaureate program. So I think our programs are having great success. And one of the things that we see with increased enrollment is that the school system is obviously driving people's decisions to move to Groton. So we really see this as a benefit for the community to maintain house prices and make this a desirable community to come to. And we suggested that the economic development folks include this in their information, and they contacted me today, as you know. And so the whole Groton 2020 is having a very positive impact, first on our children, but secondly, on the community. And the, I hope to articulate this during the budget hearings, but Groton 2020, in my mind, was always driven by excellence, efficiency, and equity. And I think we're seeing, we're seeing evidence of all three of those things. And for me, the budget is of great value, and I want to say publicly that we have spent the last two months, at least once a week, if not twice, going through this budget line by line. As I said to a reporter today, I've never seen a board have such total comprehension of what's in this budget. And I think the other night, everybody felt, our last night of deliberations, everybody felt, "This is a budget for a very small increase that provides an enormous amount for our school system." So I'm usually enthusiastic about it.
Any other discussion? So...
All in favor?
All in favor. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
I'm sorry, did you say something?
I hope people heard it. And we should raise our hands for Joan for this one.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, is that an abstained or opposed?
We'll go with opposed.
I'm sorry.
We'll go with opposed this time.
Opposed, okay. So, two opposed and the rest in favor. And I will give my thoughts on why I voted, even though we worked really, really hard on this. I had asked Dr. Gannier if he could get a little closer to a 0% increase this year in light of the consolidation of our schools and the taxpayers needing to start funding what we did borrow for the school. It is a very modest increase, so it took me a lot of thought whether or not I was going to support this or not. But I'm hoping that we will maybe find some additional savings, and I had asked Dr. Gannier that if possible, we could get this down even a little bit lower. So, but otherwise, you know, I support education and usually the budget to the fullest.
Well, one of the things we talked about today is we're carefully monitoring our impact date. If you remember, last year, the impact date came in $2 million more than projected. Right now, we already have about 3.2 that we've projected. Typically, more money comes in in the spring, so that would be an opportunity for the town to support the budget without having essentially take it from taxpayers. And the other thing is, we're, I want to get a little more clear about exactly how low our tuition amount is for magnet...
From the other towns?
And if we, if we see, like Susan said, there are 140-something students that had come to the middle school. If those students are coming from tuition-based programs, and certainly some of them are, then we would be able to do exactly that. So I think, I think we will, we will be within striking distance.
That's great.
And like I said, I think, I think there's an awful lot here to like, at, as you say, a modest price.
Yes. Jay?
I just wanted to mention that I hope people understand that the Groton 2020 plan was primarily a plan which would reduce the future costs of all these CIPs. Like Dr. Gannier said, spending $65 million to basically renovate a 60, 70-year-old school, but it will still have issues, in some cases, unfortunately with asbestos, maybe PCBs, different things that really can only be solved by building new. And that primarily is what the 2020, however, along the way, there are going to be operational savings every year. But the budget, if it weren't touched, would be going up 2.5% to 3%, just due to contractual increases. And we're also, while we're consolidating into smaller buildings, the number of students didn't go down. In fact, it's going up, so we're educating more students than we even anticipated in 2014. In 2014, we thought that it might continue to go down, and we're hearing now that it's going back up due to a variety of reasons. And yet, you know, when you put two schools together into one building, while we were able to save through the disbanning of the team concept, you still want the students to be able to have the same extracurricular activities and things, so it's not as though, you know, you can just maintain that as if it were just one school, community. You're bringing two communities together, so you want them to have that equity. And you'll end up with safer, much more efficient buildings in the end. And while there are some operational, I think it always, the focus of 2020 was to avoid the cost of all these CIPs, which are quite substantial, when you talk about roof replacements and boilers and security systems, fire suppression systems, removal of asbestos, PCBs, all these other things that will really cost a lot in the long run to bring. The building may look beautiful for the next 100 years, but it's not going to be functional as an educational institution.
Any other discussion?
I suppose I should explain myself as well, we're explaining. I would actually like to stay at higher, so that we make sure that we meet our contractual needs with the 2% for the teachers and make sure we keep everybody that we have a contractual agreement with. We have more students coming in, I want to make sure we can, if we need to supply an extra teacher, we can hire one. I want to make sure that the needs of the students come first and the needs of the teachers come second, and then everything else falls in after that. But I want to make sure we have enough space to do what we need to do, because we don't know, there are a lot of unknowns at opening a new building, and I want to make sure that we have the flexibility to cover that.
Very good, okay. Anything else?
So there's the irony for you.
Say that again.
The irony.
Okay, I think, I think it's...
We appreciate your ironic comments.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, think about, I'm the Republican, she's the Democrat. I want to raise the budget.
And we're all in this together. So, so I think we're all done.
Ms. Point?
Well, we have...
We have letters and comments.
Oh, no, I meant with that.
Yeah, we are, thank God.
Those were just comments.
Well, thank the board. It's been a long tedious process.
Thank you.
And Ken.
And Ken, very well done.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. And Susan.
Mr. Whitelock, do you have any communications or comments or whatever?
I just wanted to, we don't always take time to go through this, the volunteer hours for the schools. And I wanted to point out, Fitch had 476 volunteer hours in January. Behind that was Northeast Academy of 224. So some, this is parents that are donating their time. S.B. Butler at 124, Cutler Middle at 134, Charles Barnum, 84 hours, Kolnasky, 77 hours, Clowchester, 90 hours, Mary Morrison, 17 and 1/2, and Westside, 89. So thank you to all the parents who give of their time to help support our students.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
I attended the Serenity Ball Gala this month, which was just wonderful and quite a success, and almost 600 people attended.
Wow, nice.
Big success, which covered GASP, Groton Alliance for Substance Prevention, for those who don't know, and Community of Hope, which is a sober house for women in Groton, and Community Speaks Out, which is a support group, so all three. Plus, I just attended a wrap-up GASP meeting, so it sucked a lot of my time.
Very good. Ms. Point?
I went to Leamy Hall at Coast Guard, because there was a marvelous discussion on how to be an anti-racist. And it was filmed. It was, it was just over 1,000 people there. And how to be an anti-racist.
She couldn't hear.
Anti-racist, I didn't hear.
You went, and I also went all at the same time, to the Holocaust, they was at Avery Point. And it was, it was an incredible speaker.
In that gentleman's book, right?
Yes, very, he was actually a child at the time.
Yes.
And he went through it. Also, I finally went to a real basketball game. It was, it was at East Line.
She's going to become a cheerleader.
And we did win. We did win. And I was right in the middle of a bunch of our students. I was so proud. They behaved so incredibly well.
There you go.
It was just, you know, people who say, you know, the kids today, the kids today are pretty darn good. Anyway, that's what I did this week. Months.
I'm going to mention that Groton Recreation Department is holding a fundraiser Friday at the Hilton Garden Inn at 6:30 to support our fields and our programs. I would like to ask Dr. Gannier, as soon as possible, you mentioned holding the meetings for the consolidations of our new elementary schools next year, because even though there will be some redistricting, because we're closing Clowchester, we're closing Butler, we're closing Mary Morrison, so where do the kids go from? So as soon as possible, the board needs to see it, and parents and families need to see those charts too. So I just thought I'd bring that up.
We're working on it. I'll get the information to you.
It's easy for the Groton Middle School, because everybody's coming together, so we don't have to worry about that.
Ms. Dusson?
Oh, Groton has an amazing talent for hiring phenomenally adorable bus drivers. Wonderful with the kids, wonderful with the parents, safe drivers. I mean, I've let my kids go home on a bus, because I was afraid to drive in the snow. And for about 17 years now, a retired Groton bus driver has, writes to me every year, and he comes up, and sometimes we have coffee, and I just really want to thank Groton bus drivers for what they do, because they are fabulous and they keep in touch with you. I mean, the kids, my kids' bus drivers, that's, we're going back some now.
Very good.
I was, I just love your friend Frank, and I hope bus drivers that retire in the future, feel free to write me too.
Usually, I'm important people in the lives, it's the first staff person that they see in the morning and the last one in the afternoon, and they have an enormous impact on the children.
They do. And my kids love this man, and I just can't tell you how tickled I was to get another letter from him.
I know that Mrs. Jolene can speak to that too, and I agree 100%. Ms. Porter?
I have two things. First of all, in two weeks, the first middle school students will go into competition for Connecticut History Day at NFA, so I'm wishing all of them, we have 12 students from Cutler. And I'm hoping that we can bring this to the entire middle school. I've already had conversations with Mr. Bass about, because it is a 6th through 12 program, that we could possibly get it into like different levels, and he and I are in a preliminary discussion on that. And I'm also offering my services for professional development at no cost to Groton, for training teachers. So I'm, well, I can do a one-and-a-half hour to six-hour workshop, so there you got it. So, all right. And the other thing I want to do is say thank you to Dr. Gannier for his putting out the information about the census. The census is such, is coming up, and the first mailings will go out in about three weeks, and we really need to have a good count, we need a solid count. I'm going to ask everybody who's watching to make sure that they respond to the census, because it does impact our funding. And, you know, for no other reason, this funding goes to Groton kids, the Groton seniors, Groton, Groton community. So there will be a couple of events. I know that they're planning something at Fitch High School in March for the, from the Riverfront, the TBCCA. This Saturday, this Thursday, excuse me, at 11 o'clock, I'll be at the Senior Center. I'm doing, and I am available to come and discuss different parts of the census at any group. I've been to the RTM, and it's really something that we need to be informed about, and we need to, we need to respond. So I'm really hoping that everybody does do their civic duty. This is easy. It's, you can do it online, on the phone, or you can wait for your paper, but, you know, your paper or form, but it's very easy and it's very... But it's very easy and it's very quick. There's only seven questions. And we get a portion. And the thing, the one thing I want to say is that last census in 2010, Groton was undercounted by 20 to 30%. Now this year, if we lose people, for every person who does not respond, it's $2,900 a year times 10 years. And so if you, you know, 35 people don't respond, you're talking millions of dollars. Talk about, and if we go with the 7,000 people who did not respond the last time over 10 years, think about the money we are losing just because we don't want to fill out a paper or make a phone call or get online. So I'm encouraging everybody to please. And I'm asking the board to continue to support. Thank you, Dr. Guneer, for sending out the letter. And there is information that has been put out in flyers, and hard copies are available as soon as my grants come through.
Thank you. Fabulous. Rita?
I just, are people going to be going door to door? Are there census takers also?
Yes, there are, but only, only after, that's not going to happen until you've had the opportunities to self-respond. And they don't want, they really don't want to have to do this. Because, you know, people are, it's not as safest if people feel very uncomfortable knocking on doors. So if you want to avoid that, just give them a jingle call up because it's a toll-free number. You get a live person at the other end. So it is, you know, it's simple, it's easy, and it's also very secure. And we've been assured by the U.S. Census Bureau that our information is secure by increased IT support. So it is something that we need to do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
My tale is very different. This is all back to kids. At Groton Rotary, we had a guest a few weeks ago. His name is Connor Hall. And he is from the Aluminum Falcons.
Oh.
And he is not a member of that team because he is, he is homeschooled. He is an AP senior dual program, extremely bright kid who's very well-spoken and loves what he does. So he is the mentor for the kids at the high school. His brain is way beyond what we would think average, to say the least. And he explained the history of the Falcons, where they are now, how many kids are involved, and the energy that goes into it. He, this is his life. He eats it, sleeps it. He's being offered scholarships, of course, to major colleges. But he has that huge enthusiastic team of kids with him. They are, right now, New England champions. They're 20 out of 68 towards the world championship. They have received innovation awards, industrial design awards. They know what they need to do and improved their robots from last year so that they can do different tasks this year. And he showed a PowerPoint, which was so helpful to me, to see what actually was going on and what they get these things to do. It's absolutely amazing. They are involved in summer camp. And I said, well, how old are the kids? He explained, from grades four through eight, ages nine to 13. And this year, as far as outreach goes, those kids have been working with other kids now for 57 days or 115 hours. They do the camps programs in schools during the summer. It's absolutely amazing. Things fall on in Groton that the rest of the state even is not aware of. These are just extremely bright kids, serious, helpful adults. And it goes under the radar of what kids are doing. Amazing.
I'll tell you, if you ever get a chance to see an actual competition,
I have to do that.
It's like a pep rally.
It is.
They're screaming and yelling, and the robots smash into each other. Never mind that they throw balls and everything, but you get to smash the other guy's robot. It's pure chaos. And it is, I was stunned. I mean, if you talk about going to a basketball game, it was really, really exciting.
And the reason they know what expectations are this year is that the international group understands they're one of the best in the world.
Yeah.
And they've received more awards than any other team in the world. So this is headline material about good things at Groton, yet again.
They're good auto because they were invited.
Right.
I really enjoyed the celebration of kids' art again.
Yes.
Powerful. Parents are supporting, teachers are there. It's a wonderful evening. And what I walked away with after actually seeing the teachers of art in Groton, it's very talented adults inspiring kids to find their own talents, and they do. And the relationship between adult and student is just so positive. You could see it throughout the evening, really good. One more thing. Yesterday, there was a concert at the Senior Center to support the survivors of the bushfires in Australia. The Senior Center was absolutely jammed. It was donations only. They brought in close to $2,000. And lots of families from Groton were there. The New London Jazz Band was there, and then the Groton Swing Band. So what a wonderful afternoon.
Wow.
That's great. But I also want to thank Mark for putting it on the website, The Art Show. That was lovely to view.
Thank you.
So I saw you at the, at Leamy, at the anti-racist. I saw you sitting with Susan in the center of them.
Yeah, I got there, I had to walk a long way. And it's not easy because my-
I keep the P Academy.
But it's okay. It was just-
No. I'm going to give everybody a piece of advice that I got from my Coast Guard wife maybe 30 years ago. She said, and this happened to me at Leamy, she said, always go down front because everybody thinks there's nothing there. And there's always a space there. And I got it.
Fortunately, she saw me looking and said, what do you, what do you have to say?
At any rate, I went to, I of course went to the art opening. It was magical. I mean, every time, it's been wonderful. But this time, they really did outdo themselves. And you're so right, Jane, about the relationship between children and teachers. And tomorrow, Mrs. Porter and I are going to the high school, and we're going to judge the Life of Poetry Contest.
Oh.
Oh, nice.
So, at any rate, I'm going to ask somebody to do what I always do.
To move to adjourn second?
Okay.